Good morning, I'd like to call this meeting, please rise.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome everybody. Item number three, any citizens in here? Anybody, item four, meeting with county officers regarding S25, 26. First up is Ms. Laura.
Mine is exactly the same as it has been for a very long time. No differences whatsoever.
You're all over here for that?
I'm the easy one, I guess, see?
You guys have any questions for Laura? Good.
All right.
Laura, thank you.
Thank you.
You're more welcome to hang around though.
I will.
She's up next. Shaw, can I have her?
Small increases for my employees, yes.
State raises funding any this year?
Nope, I...
They cut it any? They did cut it?
Just in a jury and some on my employee's side on the state's side.
Any questions? No? No?
Thank you, sir.
Sher, if you're up, you're up.
No one to take a break, you're welcome to. Come be a little bit. What side do you want to be first?
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office side? Sheriff's office side were asking for, I think it was forty-seven thousand for a one-year step raise for everybody. Comes down to forty-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents on the sheriff's office side. Of course, I'm not included in that. I'm not paying.
I agree, I know.
I do expense my... Any questions on that?
I don't have any. Lloyd, Mark? I guess.
Then on the citizen's side, obviously we got a pretty big ask. As you guys know, our water and sewer bill is probably one of our biggest expenses outside of healthcare and food. And I'm asking the county general to take care of that. We're looking at about a hundred and two thousand dollars a year for water and sewer.
If you want to share.
How old is he?
Does this include recorded sales tax for this thing?
No.
Oh, it does. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. Selene, lights your board?
For our personal services, we increased by a thousand for raises. And then our part-time, we increased it by two thousand. And our travel expense with our training next year for our precinct officials, I also increased that one. And then our MNO for postage and election expenses, that one, we also increased for six thousand.
Any questions?
No.
Civil defense.
Okay, not there, I'd like to start again. So, personnel service, they asked for the raise for me and Sean. No part-time help on travel and expenses. I asked to increase that by five hundred dollars for some of our conferences and mandatory training that we have to go to. The conference rates and everything have gone up, so that might help cover that, so it doesn't completely drain that account. For maintenance and operations, I asked for an extra ten thousand on that. So, last year, as you remember, we, you guys approved me to hire a full-time person. So, Sean came over from the sheriff's office, so that was my first time budgeting with another employee. So, I ran really to the bare minimum on that account this year. Didn't have anything left over for a lot of that, went to maintenance on the pickup that he drives. So... And then also we use that for our cell phones and gas and fuel and other stuff on there. On capital outlay, I put in there and asked for sixty thousand dollars on that. I tried to get a new truck for Sean. The sheriff's office last year was very nice and donated or transferred over one of the older pickups to us for Sean to drive. That thing's got two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand miles on it. And it's, the transmission's starting to slip in it, air conditioner's going out in it. And so, it's probably putting more money into it than what it's worth. I don't know if we would use all that. Of course, I would try to find, you know, something within purchasing guidelines if possible and, you know, go that route and not have to use all that. I did attach some quotes on different vehicles that we reached out to different people to try to get a baseline price on, you know, a new vehicle and stuff. We reached out to a few different places on pricing. And if we get like last year's model, that was cheaper, so we would definitely try to go that route.
So, they called you a new truck at forty-seven thousand?
Yeah, and then we estimated about, we called some of the upfitter shops and they said probably around ten, you know, the radios, lights, all that stuff in there, equipment, to outfit it. And then on siren maintenance, I upped that a little bit to try to update some of the equipment and some of the sirens. Replacing, we replaced a few radios, antennas, batteries, solar panels this year and some of the sirens. And some of the ones that we still have, they need to be updated in there and replaced.
No grants for sirens anymore?
So, right now, so we can, on the grants for the sirens, it's mainly for new installs. It's not for updating and maintaining the ones that we got. And right now, there's not any hazard mitigation grants open to, you know, apply for new ones right now.
And we paid for some of those. But doesn't have to be more popular, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have to submit this the way it is, or should we remove your justification out of the estimate need itself?
When he turned it in, he turned it in.
So, the first...
Those are just your copies.
So, when our first meeting at the excise board, we didn't know if we were going to be here or not, because we thought we were going to have to go help with the Oklahoma City under parade and stuff. And so, we had typed that up and attached with it for that excise board.
On...
Yeah. That's the reason why that was in there.
All right, I don't have a question. You guys, no? Thank you, sir.
Yep. Thank you.
Hey, Monty, can I say something?
Sure.
I have a vehicle that I might could give him. Jordan, my deputy, he's got a new one coming in September, and I always donate it to the sheriff's office. It's already outfitted with sirens, I mean, do y'all use the sirens?
Yeah.
It's already outfitted and ready to go. I could transfer it over.
That would be a...
To them.
Save help and save money.
It would save money.
Awesome.
Yeah.
If that's okay with Damon. I usually give it to the sheriff's office.
How many miles is on that?
I'll have to ask, probably eighty-five thousand or so.
Man, you can go that way with district two.
But that would save money.
Right.
I always donate it to the sheriff's office, but you're, y'all are a part of, you know, all that, so you might think it off.
All right, Sher, thank you. And where's you, use her up here.
So, our personal services will be the same as last year. We asked for extra last year in order to have a third educator. So, we do have Carly here that started in January. She's the new four-H educator. And then travel expense, we actually was down a little bit, and I'm asking for it to go back up. So, that's at twenty, so an extra twenty-five hundred dollars. With three educators traveling, it's a little tighter. And then maintenance and operation, just a couple of extra thousand dollars in asking. Our printer and our computers are outdated. And Windows 10 is getting ready to be obsolete, and most of us are working on Windows 10 computers. So, we'll need to probably update them, so that we can have some extra and be able to take care of the printers. The printer, the big printer, we're having issues with it, and it was bought in 2019, and it has, it was about ten thousand dollars. So, we probably won't be able to replace that exactly, but we'll find something that will be comparable to that. And then, so really, I'm just asking for forty-five hundred dollars extra. Again, we do try to use, you know, different things to help us throughout the year. And I do have with me Hannah, who is our summer intern. So, like Carly was last year, we have a new one this year, and O S U pays for all her expenses. So, we don't have any of that coming out of our county budget.
You're welcome.
So, she's learning, she's an animal science and education major at Oklahoma State, so...
It's a good school to learn.
Yes.
Any questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Prepair board, let's just get past the takes and shows and come back. Have a good day.
Thank you, you too.
Mary?
On the sixteen-hundred account, we're actually asking, we're twenty-five thousand less, but because funding and capital outlay this year, not asking for a new fleet vehicle. On the seventeen-hundred account, just the same as last year.
Any questions yet? Not good. That's next rebound.
Visual inspection is for seventeen hundred. So, she just told you, oh.
All right, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Sher?
Nothing's changed except the hundred-dollar amount raised for my first deputy, everything's the same.
County commissioners? We just asked for, on the county commission just said, we just asked for a raise for the board. Other than that, it's the same. General government? What do you want to speak on the half of any area?
Sure, so there's a decrease in personnel services just because it had went along with the shift of employees. But there's still enough there to ask for the raise for the two custodians. Maintenance and operations, a small increase, as you all are aware, property liability insurance took quite a jump. So, we've asked for an extra eighty-one thousand there. Capital outlay and building maintenance, those have kind of been the savings areas where we've been trying to save some money and do the courthouse renovations. So, we kind of flip-flop the requests for this year. Capital outlay at one and a half million, building maintenance at three and a half, with the hopes that about two to two and a half of what's in building maintenance will be applied towards the courthouse.
Next is the safety, I mean, they feel all this down. Quickly increase that.
So, actually, longevity remained at sixty thousand. Safety award was reduced by twenty-four hundred to forty thousand. Incentive award was reduced from thirty thousand to fifteen thousand. So, overall, there's about a fifteen thousand decrease.
Charity, we had the ready set up. I think we went up. Normally at seventeen fifty, we went up to two thousand on charity. County audit? That's it, a statue, we have the...
And it will be adjusted once we have valuations, one tenth of one mill has to go beyond it.
Any questions? Interns? We're actually asking for less, last year was two-point-nine, this year is two-point-six, six-three-one?
We were able to reduce the amount set for employee health insurance by three-hundred thousand on the ask. That also helps fund that savings that we're putting towards the courthouse, so... But note that there was the increase for workman's comp, so...
Our highway budget account, we asked for six-hundred thousand, district three, district one-two-zero. Actually, two-hundred thousand per district is what we're asking for. Over, here we go, county clerk.
So, I will, just as a reminder, the filing fees collected in our office actually go to the general fund budget. So, this year, and I ran a report this morning since I have the complete year, we actually brought in eighty-four thousand dollars more in filing fees that are going to the budget pot than we did the year before. So, there's a lot of land transactions going on in the county. I've asked for twenty thousand more in personnel services to fund some raises and a additional employee for the finance side. Once we get moved into the new building and I actually have room or place to put a desk and a person, I could really use an extra person on the finance side. Other than that, I didn't ask for any additional travel or maintenance or any of that. So, I've asked for a total of three-hundred-and-fifty-eight. We put four-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand in fees.
County excise board, you don't get any questions for both?
No.
Excise.
There's no change on the excise board at twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Prepair's not here, so I guess we just...
I can tell you what he told the excise board. His total request is a little lower in capital outlay. They got the roof done this year, and they accumulated, as you know, you ordered the coach yesterday, to replace the three-H vacuums. So, they've reduced their capital outlay request. What they want to start on this next fiscal year is redoing a bunch of the pins with that capital outlay request.
What was the report on that?
It went from, they had received this last fiscal year a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, and they're asking for a hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. We still do not have valuations, so until we get that, we don't have any solid idea of where we're headed with money collections, so...
Any more discussion on S25?
No.
We have five considerations of possible action on financial statement and resale property plan. Four-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and four thousand. Any questions?
So, the resale is the fund collected by the treasurer's office when properties are taken back and sold?
Oh, okay.
Or mowing fees or lien fees accumulate, it goes into a cash fund for the treasurer's office. She actually pays the majority of her staff and bills out of that, so she doesn't have to use the general fund. But she's required to file that annually.
I'll make the motion and approve the financial statement. I'll second. Have a motion and second any further discussion. Here and then, all pairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Six, consideration of possible action on resolution approving monetary compensation for overtime hours in the election.
So, we have to do this, when there's an election, it requires overtime, but it's for other entities, so not county or state. That other entity is required to compensate the overtime. You know, the county has a policy to use comp time, but because we're going to get reimbursed from the entity holding the election, we have to allow that to go to cash for the employees that work overtime.
So... I'll second Mark's motion. I've got a motion and a second any further discussion. Here and then, all pairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Seven, consideration of possible action on resolution establishing the Logan County investment policy for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
This board has to allow Sher as the treasurer to make investments that can be made.
Change, you're the same.
It's all the same, I mean.
So... Sir? I have a motion and a second any further discussion. Here and then, all pairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Eight, consideration of possible action on resolution designating the depository banks for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Again, that's to allow the treasurer to use these things to...
The local banks here. Move to approve. Put that, Mark? Move to approve. Sher? Have a motion and a second any further discussion. Here and then, all pairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Number nine, consideration of possible action to approve application for temporary appropriations for general fund and health department.
So, this is, those funds in general fund, not your cash accounts, they work on fifty percent of last year's approved budget while we're working through the budget process, with the exceptions of general government MNO. We have to increase it over fifty percent because of paying the insurance bill. Workman's comp, we don't fund it at fifty, we fund it at a hundred percent because we have the bill, we need to pay it. And the civil attorney for the district attorney's office is funded in full because we have to get it paid. The rest are going to be fifty percent of last year's budget as operating costs while we work through the budget process. And that's general, and this is health.
I move to approve application for temporary appropriations for general fund and health department for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Second, I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here and then, all pairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. I intend consideration of possible action on C E D five funding project application in the mail out of twenty-five thousand for crushed asphalt on various roads in district one. I move to approve. Second, have a motion and a second any further discussion? Here and then, all pairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Eleven, consideration of possible action on notice, knowledge... Eleven, consideration of possible action on notice, acknowledging receipt of notice of poor plans for AT and T and Southwest for Bell Telephone and hold the act of...
What is that? The phone already spoke to him.
I'll move that we acknowledge and hold it to act.
Say aye.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Here and then, all pairs say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I recall thirteen.
Another action on twelve, thirteen. Fourteen, consideration of possible action on consent for general...
Okay, these are transfers from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve consent of item...
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the... Here and then, all pairs say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Fifteen comments, none of his questions by board of county commissioner for other county officers or departments. Stephen?
Yes, sir.
Danny? Are you sure? All right. Turn the radio. Nick? Stephen, you know any updates on the dance?
I do, but he's only the start page. He had a couple jobs he was trying to finish up. He did get the materials ordered and delivered, I think, already. But he's only the start page.
All right, thank you. Sixteen, consideration of possible action on... More motion?
Second.
All pairs say aye. The journey, thank you, Dennis.